Good afternoon, everyone. This is the December 19th, 2024, meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 676-897-5401, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. And there is a five-minute limit on those comments, and there'll be a clock up there that is strictly enforced. If everybody could shut off any gadgets, cell phones, or anything that makes a noise, that would be appreciated. The procedural steps are as follows. We do a roll call of all board members to authorize this form of a meeting. We ask if anybody is participating on the phone to make their identity known. Sarah Clark, on my right, will read the notice as advertised. You will be able to present your appeal. And then, anyone in favor of the appeal may speak for up to five minutes. I will read the correspondences, if there are any. Then, anyone who is not in favor or would like to ask a question will be afforded a time to do that. Then, the applicant can have some rebuttal time. Then, we ask questions, make comments, close the public hearing, the board deliberates, and usually votes. And after that, it should be known that all votes are taken by a roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we'll close via a verbal confirmation and note the time. At this point, so we'll do a roll call of all board members that are here. We usually have eight members, and a couple are absent tonight, but we do have David Nixon, who is voting, Paul Semple, who will be voting, Lee Hovey, who will, I think, not voting, Steve DeBoer will be voting, and Virginia Fenwick will be voting, as will I. So let's do a roll call, starting with Virginia Fenwick.
Approving of the...
Yes, approving of this form of a meeting.
I approve of this form of the meeting.
Steve?
Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Paul C. Semple approves.
David Nixon, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. Okay, so the first application, no, the first thing we're going to do is meeting minutes from November 21, 2024. If Paul could have a motion, and Virginia Fenwick, our clerk, will second that, I think?
I will move to approve the minutes as published.
I second and approve.
Okay, and a roll call vote, Virginia?
I vote yes.
Steve DeBoer votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
As do I. That's unanimous. First application is 24-136 Sandy Bliss LLC, and that will be 75 Main Street.
Application number 24-136 Sandy Bliss LLC, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, Peel Box 485, West Harwich, Mass., 02671. Owner of property located at 75 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' Map 16B, Block 64B, Lot 68X2. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 22-107, granted on January 26, 2023, which allowed for the partial demolition, installation of a new foundation, and construction of additions. The applicant now seeks to modify this special permit to allow for an increase in building coverage. The approved building coverage was 3,675 square feet, and the constructed building coverage is 3,693 square feet, where 2,950 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains three dwellings on a site with 26,266 square feet of land area in an R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 14, and Sections 5B and 8D2B of the Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon. If you could just identify yourselves for the record?
Sure. Good afternoon, Attorney Jeff Ford here on behalf of the applicant, along with John Barker from Palermo Savory De Silva.
Welcome.
So, as indicated, the applicant seeking a modification from their previously approved special permit that was in January of 2023. The dwelling, at this point, has been fully constructed, and a final as-built was done, and it was at that time that they discovered that they went over on the building coverage by approximately 18 square feet. This, as the board may recall, was a very historic house. It was being preserved. There was a small demolition, there was a new foundation going under all of it, and there was going to be some additions. So, the new foundation was poured, everything was put in, and with, like many historic houses, it wasn't always straight. They ended up finding out that the walls were skewed, and it did not fit on the foundation and needed to be squared off. So John Barker has been working very hard on this and working with historic and with his office, and if it makes sense to the chair, perhaps we have him walk through the areas that were changed and how that came about?
I think we're...
If you're interested?
It's not that we're not interested, but it just might not be necessary.
Sure. So if you don't feel it's necessary, I did submit findings, same as last time around. The only change I made, obviously, was the 18-square-foot difference. Even with the slight increase, the dwelling is still 74 square feet less than what it was previously, and it certainly is not more detrimental, in our opinion, and we think the board can make a finding to modify.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. And we do have those for the record. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. There is one from the Health Agent for 75 Main Street. And Judith Giorgio, our Health Agent, tells us on 12/4/2024 that she reviewed the changes. The property was approved for a four-bedroom at the time of the construction. It has maintained the proposed and approved floor layout, and she has no concerns. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Again, seeing none. Questions from the board? I guess we'll just quickly go through, if there are any.
No questions.
Steve?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
None. Any questions? Nope. Oh, nor do I. Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
I second that and say yes.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Dave Nixon?
Well, it's 18 square feet, and it's been, I think, about two months since we've had a contractor era, and I guess that's pretty good for us, huh? 18 square feet, and as Attorney Ford pointed out, it's still less than what it was before we granted the special permit, and that makes me think it's okay.
Yep, okay. Ginny?
Yeah, agree with Mr. Nixon, and this page, I think, is very helpful and very clear, the building footprint comparison, one that you had that showed the issue with the wall. I also want to say, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I appreciate the preservation to the historic house, so I have no issues.
And Steve?
I have no issues. It was explained well.
Yeah, very good. And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues.
Paul?
It's nice to see the A-team in here instead of Michael. I did take another look at the property, and it looks like a very nice job. I do not think it's in any way substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, and nor do I, so we'll have a motion.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
I second and say yes.
Steve?
Steve DeBoer approves.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Hey, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And whenever Sarah's ready, we're going to go straight to 24-137, 500 Orleans Road, Steven Goldstein, 560 Orleans Road, same address.
Application number 24-137, 560 Orleans Road LLC, care of Steven Goldstein, 5 Oak Lane, Larchmont, New York, 1053E. Owner of property located at 560 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' Map 13J, Block 7, Lot G20. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming shed on a nonconforming lot via the replacement of the shed. The existing proposed shed will be nonconforming in that they are located 26.7 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 26,566 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Protective Bylaw.
Excuse me. Steven Goldstein, I presume? Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I think this is pretty straightforward. We've got a pre-existing shed, eight by eight. It's not in great shape, as you could see from the pictures and from the site visit. So we're proposing to simply replace it.
Okay. Do you want to go through any of the criteria? No, you don't have to. Okay, so is that your presentation?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this shed? Let us know. Seeing none, I will read the one correspondence for 560 Orleans Road by a Health Agent, also on 12/4/2024. Judith Giorgio tells us that she got the application and packet, and she has no concerns about the shed replacement at this location. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Are there any? There might be. Yeah? No? Anybody? No?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Virginia Fenwick seconds and says yes.
Steve?
Steve says yes.
And Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
As do I. Okay, we have a motion, Paul?
I'll move to...
Oh, wait a minute. No. No, we're in deliberations. Sorry. Delaborations. Dave Nixon?
Well, I went and looked at the shed, and as the gentleman at the microphone said, it's not in great shape. And in fact, it's less than not in great shape, I guess I would say. And from what I saw, he's just going to replace it. Simple thing, makes sense, so in no way is it detrimental to the neighborhood.
Amazing that he even has to come here, isn't it?
Well, it's a shame that he does, but that is correct.
Yeah, okay. Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Nixon. I wanted to also add that I thought your presentation, the pictures and the explanation, very thorough. I mean, we have existing previous surveys, street views, aerial views, so it was very clear, and that is very helpful to us, so thank you.
All right, Steve, your thoughts on the shed?
I think it's a good project. Where that shed is now is completely hidden from view from multiple sides, so I have no issues with that.
And Lee?
I agree. Meets our criteria and is in no way detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, Paul?
I agree with Ginny that the presentation is fantastic, nice and clear, leaves no issues. You go past the property, you can't see the shed. I mean, certainly not substantially more detrimental.
Okay, very good. I guess we'll take a motion?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
And Ginny?
Ginny seconds that and votes yes.
Steve DeBoer approves.
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, now we're going to slow things down. Next application, 24-129 Noble House Hotels via care of Sarah Toronto Flores, 359 Main Street, whenever Sarah's ready.
And Ms. Chair, you would like me to read all three of the...
Please.
Okay. Application number 24-129 Noble House Hotels, care of Sarah Toronto Flores Esquire, 155 Seaport Boulevard, Boston, Mass., 02210. Operator of property located at 359 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors' Map 16C, Block 83, Lot 67. The applicants are appealing the Building Commissioner's determination that variances are required for the increase in rentable rooms as well as the increase in building height as aggrieved parties under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 8, and Section 8D2A of the Protective Bylaw. Under application number 24-130, the applicant seeks dimensional variances from the buildable upland area requirements for six additional rental units and the increase in building height above the 30-foot maximum allowed. Dimensional variances are required in Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 8D2C of the Protective Bylaw. Under application number 24-131, the applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming hotel/restaurant on a nonconforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing structure is nonconforming in that it is 21.9 feet from the road where a 50-foot setback is required. The structure contains 18 rental rooms plus managers' quarters on a lot containing 37,281 square feet of buildable upland, where 64,000 square feet is required. The proposed six rental rooms require an additional 18,000 square feet of buildable upland area. The existing lot coverage is 20,214 square feet, 48.32%, and the proposed lot coverage is 20,348 square feet, 48.64%, where 90% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 41,831 square feet in a GB1 and R-20 zoning district. The special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of Protective Bylaw.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, Sarah Toronto Flores, on behalf of the applicant. I did create a PowerPoint presentation that I think Sarah has queued up for me that I'm trying to distill and perhaps give a general overview of what I am sure is a very dense narrative, as that agenda item probably also indicates. I want to try and make it as simple and straightforward as possible. So, next slide. First, our team. I'm here as a project attorney. Bill Riley is also in the audience today and has substantial history with this project, as well as the initial permitting requests. Alex Edniger from my office also assisted with the zoning application and materials. He's on the Zoom. The project architect, Jim Owen, is also here today, and he prepared the six pages of your floor plans and building elevations, which you should have in your packet. Paul Sweetser was the site engineer, and we have submitted both proposed and existing condition site plans with your package. And David Crosby is the project contractor from Ocean Edge Construction, I believe. He may be on the line to answer questions once we get to that point. Next slide. Next, sorry. The Chatham Inn has been around for quite some time, almost two centuries. It's the oldest inn on Cape Cod. We believe the structure was constructed in 1830, and it's been operating as an inn since 1870. The inn itself, obviously, predates zoning. It also predates a lot of the neighborhood that has grown up around the edge in the residential side, which is all in recent years. So this is an old, pre-existing, nonconforming inn use on this property. Two L's were added sometime between 1953 and the early '80s, and then in 2017, a small two-story addition was added to the kitchen in the rear, to add a kitchen and restaurant to the rear of the building. This was allowed by this board via special permit in 2017, and I do talk about that later. Next slide. The site contains 37,281 square feet of upland. It's actually larger than that, 40-plus thousand square feet in total, 37 of upland. The Conservancy District runs through it. The top of the coastal bank is defined by the floodplain, which comes in off a wetland that is adjacent to the property. So it is not undersized. There's only 5,000 square feet required in this zoning district. However, it is pre-existing, nonconforming use for an inn use, because the inn use requires, in Section 7 of your bylaw, 3,000 square feet of upland per room. So the existing 18 units would require 54,000 square feet, and we have 37,000 square feet of upland. So we are pre-existing, nonconforming under that particular provision of your bylaw for inn use. The existing building height is also pre-existing, nonconforming at just over 30 feet. It's 31.93 square feet, where 30 feet is allowed. And in the upper right-hand corner of our site plan, you'll see the calculation for that building height. Next slide. So our proposal that's in front of you is kind of straightforward, given the amount of materials that you've had to review. The owner is simply seeking to add six new guestrooms to the inn. Not, those guestrooms will not result in an increase in the footprint at all. They're constructed in existing space on the third story of the existing structure and will be accommodated through dormers, so the reconfiguration of dormers. The total footprint expansion of 134 square feet, very minimal, but it's related to the construction of an elevator shaft that will assist handicapped and elderly and guests to reach that third floor, those guestrooms. So adding those six rooms is going to extend the pre-existing, nonconforming inn use under Section 7 of your bylaw. The dormers themselves are going to be below the roof line, so we're not, the dormers are not extending the height at all. However, the elevator shaft requires 24 inches of dead space, dead airspace, above the equipment as a manufacturer requirement, so that 24 inches is going to rise above the existing roof line. There's an argument that your definition of building height excludes ornamental structures like copulas, which is what this essentially is, but it does house that electrical equipment for the elevator, and the building inspector felt we needed relief for that. So at best, it is exempted, this additional height, as an ornamental copula. At worst, zoning relief is needed because we're going 24 inches, just again, in that area of the elevator shaft. Next slide. I included this chart. This is just a duplication of what's in your narrative, and I think I was hoping it would give the real big picture here, to show that we're really only making minimal changes overall to the property, both the property itself, the building itself, and the use. The first column is what is required or allowed in the districts. Now, there are two of them. This is transected by two districts, and so we've tried to clarify in each what is required. The middle column is what is existing, and on the right-hand side is the summary of whether those requirements are going to be changed at all by the proposal. And you can see that, obviously, the lot configuration is no change. We're not impacting any setbacks. They will remain conforming. Our lot coverage is increasing by only 0.32%, but we're still well under the 90% coverage allowed, so that will remain conforming. The building coverage, again, is going to increase only by that 134 square feet, so we'll remain conforming. No change in the green area within the GB1 district. Our height, again, pre-existing, nonconforming, because it's already just about 1.9 feet over the 30-foot requirement, and we're requesting 24 additional inches, so extending that pre-existing nonconforming condition. That's the first extension. Parking will remain conforming, fully conforming. And then, the buildable upland per room is the other pre-existing nonconformity that we're seeking to extend, just for the six units. So those are the two existing nonconformities that we're seeking to extend under our request of zoning relief application here today. Next slide. So the agenda item was, I think, very complicated, and I hope I can simplify it for you. Back in, even before September, we, as Bill Riley was working on this project, and it was for the HBDC, it came to our attention that perhaps the town was of the opinion that a variance instead of a special permit was required. So to get that question out of the way before we proceed too much into additional permitting, which, as you know, can take time and money, this threshold issue of whether this can proceed by special permit, as we believe, or whether it needs a variance, needs to be determined. And so we filed a request for zoning determination with our Building Commissioner, Mr. Briggs, back in September, and it was my opinion, and it's sort of reflected in the narrative that I filed, that this squarely falls within the special permit relief provisions of your bylaw, and that we don't need a variance. By email, a week later, Sarah informed me that Town Council was of the opinion that variances and not the special permit relief that I had indicated were required for the increases to both of the two nonconformities that I described, so both the height and the number of in rooms. Next slide. So pursuant to sort of the statutory process, we have to take an appeal of that determination within 30 days. So that's the first item on the agenda, and with the chair's permission, I'd take that first, so that it can be decided whether the relief we're seeking is special permit or variance. Depending on what you decide, and again, we're requesting that you overturn the building determination, the zoning determination, and confirm that it is a special permit, then we will seek the special permit relief. That application is also included. In the event you deny the appeal, then we have requested in the alternative of variance. We don't get to that unless and until you guys deny the appeal. So that's why there are three separate applications, an appeal, a special permit, and an alternative request for a variance in the case you deny the appeal. Next slide. So this is the existing condition plan that you have. This should be very familiar to you. It was submitted full-size with your packets. I've put it up here to sort of toggle between existing conditions and the next side, which is the proposed conditions, to show how minimal. Sarah, if you just want to go through, you can just see the two. So here is one area, and here is the other area. The combined square footage of these two footprint expansions is 134 square feet only. Otherwise, everything is remaining the same on the site. We'll continue to have in excess of parking. We have 27 spaces. Even with the increase, we'll still have four. None of the site conditions are being changed, save for that 134 square feet. Next slide. So where the changes are coming are on the interior of the building. Next slide. This is the floor plan for the third floor. Again, this is currently dead, empty space. Once the dormers are constructed, or reconfigured, I should say, the six bedrooms are going to fit here, so it's guestroom 21, 22, 23, 23, 24, and 25. And you can see they're all contained within the existing footprint. It is the elevator shaft that is the addition to the building envelope. Everything else is within the existing space. And the next two slides show the dormers and how it's going to look different. So this, I thought, was very helpful. Obviously, there are six pages. I don't want to take up your time with them all, but this slide on the bottom shows the existing building, and on the top fades out everything that's remaining the same. So the only thing changing is this dormer here is being reconfigured, and the dormer extends out to here. So that's where the bulk of the room and building envelope change comes, in the form of these dormers. You'll note that they are below the existing roof line, so again, the dormers itself are lower and won't... and won't increase the height. The only height comes with this tiny, calling it a copula, but it's really the top 24 inches of the elevator shaft. And the next slide shows it without any of the fading. So this is going to be the final proposed elevation once it's all done. And you can see the minor nature of these changes in this proposal. Next. Next slide. So I don't, Sarah very kindly forwarded me Town Council's opinion earlier this week. And it's not exactly clear to me whether there's agreement on this point, but I didn't see any disagreement with these two points. So I wanted to start with them. My interpretation, and again, I don't think that there's any disagreement, is that this project wouldn't be allowed under the State Act. If we just had the State Act and there was no additional more language in your local bylaw, we wouldn't be here under a special permit, because the State Act limits the extension or alteration or changes to commercial, non-single and two-family residential dwellings. So commercial uses such as inns and stores and the like. It limits those types of changes by special permit only to situations where the change you're proposing itself complies with zoning. So that's a general rule is what 40A says. If you're not compliant with zoning, you can't do this by special permit, unless you're a single or two-family dwelling. And that's the Rockwood versus Snow case. However, and there's even more cases that I'm citing here, the law's equally clear that towns can be more permissive. And extensive case law supports the conclusion that even if you intensify, not just change, not just alter, but if you extend, expand, intensify that non-conformity, you can do it by special permit if the local bylaw lets you do that. And so that's the rub today. Does your bylaw allow this kind of change by special permit? Next slide. So although I know that he had a conversation with Sarah back in September, and that's why we're here today, but he did write an email dated November 22, which I think you all have. And I don't want to speak for him. So I tried to call from his opinion. He cites Rockwoods versus Snow and Harrison versus Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, which is obviously specific to this town, for the proposition that the bylaw section 5B that I say applies here doesn't allow for changes of this nature. He doesn't think it's the permissive type of bylaw that would let you do this. And so he's opined that it's a variance. With all due respect to Jay, and I've known him for years, I don't think he is properly construing, number one, the case law, but also the plain language of your bylaw. And that could be because he's not as familiar with that language. And he also doesn't know the long history that I'll go through in later slides, where this board, so you don't kind of have to listen to me. You don't necessarily have to listen to Jay. But we've provided examples where this board has allowed the expansion and the intensification of pre-existing non-conformities in commercial structures under Section 5B. So there's this long tradition, and I think that's where Bill was coming from. And that's why we're here appealing that decision. Next slide. So where we disagree, again, comes down to that language of Section 5B. And my interpretation is that it is a more permissive bylaw. I'm going to dissect it. Town Council, in his opinion, appears to be saying that Chatham's current bylaw is more akin to the 1991 version of the Harwich zoning bylaw that the Supreme Judicial Court analyzed in its 1990 Rockwood decision. I will say that the 1991 Harwich zoning bylaw has since been amended and is now more permissive. But back in 1991, the SJC, the way that it was worded, determined it wasn't a more permissive bylaw. So what the Rockwood, sorry, the Snow Inn wanted to do in that case back in 1991 couldn't do, because the SJC determined the Harwich zoning bylaw was not one of those more permissive bylaws. Next slide. So when you look at what the 1991 version of the Harwich bylaw said that was examined by the Rockwood Court, it is "pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be changed, extended, or altered by special permit, provided no such change, extension, or alteration would be permitted unless there is a finding that that change would not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood." That is verbatim taken from Chapter 40A. That is the zoning act. There's no difference between that language at Harwich and what was said in the zoning act. And the significance of the Rockwood decision is that because it mirrored the act, the SJC found you can't do it, because that language means that the extensions or changes themselves must comply with the bylaw. So you can't extend or you can't expand under this bylaw. It's mirroring Chapter 40A, and that does not allow those types of expansions by special permit. So for that reason, the Rockwood decision said the Harwich bylaw is not one of those more permissive bylaws, and you can't expand or intensify the non-conformities of a commercial use or structure by special permit. You need a variance. I don't agree with the way Town Council has quoted that statement. I think, in fact, my interpretation is even more conservative. Rockwood is saying, no matter what it is, if it doesn't conform to zoning, you're not allowed to do it. He had a slightly different interpretation that I noted at the bottom, but I don't think it's really relevant for our purposes. There can be no question that we wouldn't comply under the zoning act. In contrast to the Harwich zoning bylaw, however, your bylaw does not exactly mimic the State Act. Your bylaw has an extensive number of provisions. It doesn't just use those few sentences from Section 6 of the zoning act. And instead, it speaks directly to being able to enlarge and increase the nature of the non-conformities by special permit. This is Section 5B. This is the provision that I'm standing before you to say is more permissive, and that we should be allowed to do it. So I've quoted it here. It begins on this page. First of all, it's entitled "enlargement, extension, or change of non-conforming lots, buildings, or uses." So even the very title, it's contemplating that you can make it better, bigger. You can expand it. You can increase that intensity. The first paragraph applies to single or two-family dwellings. So it's not applicable to us. But it says "as provided" in 40A, Section 6. So as provided in the zoning act, they're going to mirror the zoning act as it applies to single or two-family dwellings. But then it goes on in the next paragraph, thank you, Sarah, to say "other pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses," that's us, "may be extended, altered, or changed by special permit, provided you make the substantially more detrimental finding, and provided you consider each of the following considerations." What I found most important, in addition to the word "enlarge" right in the title, is number three. It requires you to view, review the extent of the proposed increase. That's the verb in the, or that's the descriptor in the bylaw itself, "increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure or use." So the very provision in your bylaw contemplates that you can come before it on a special permit and increase that non-conformity. And provided this board makes the substantially not more detrimental finding, we can proceed by special permit. We do not need a variance. So that's why I think this bylaw is so very much different than Harwich, why Rockwood doesn't apply. And next slide. Also, why the Harrison decision that Town Council relies upon doesn't govern a different outcome here. So Town Council, I feel, has mistakenly distilled the Rockwood holding and has also included that Chatham's bylaw is like the 1991 Harwich bylaw. It's not more permissive. I think I've explained to you why neither of those things, in my view, are true. I think a simple comparison of the two bylaws shows they're vastly different and that the Chatham bylaw expressly anticipates that we could increase and intensify non-conformities by special permit. However, he relies on Harrison versus the Chatham Board of Appeals to say, hey, look, this has already come before, at least the land court. This is a land court decision in 2012, and that year is going to be important. But your land court has already determined, he says, that Chatham's is not more permissive bylaw. I think that's an overstatement of Harrison. The Harrison case, next slide, involved a pre-existing non-conforming auto repair sales building. And what they proposed to do was tear it down completely, rebuild it as a convenience store in a new building on a new location on the lot, and creating new non-conformities while doing it. And the land court said, hey, you have this language in the bylaw, but it doesn't, it says you can alter, change, or extend. It doesn't say you can completely reconstruct the building. And it certainly doesn't say that you can create new non-conformities in other respects as well. So if in Chatham, someone's proposal came to reconstruct entirely the structure or created new non-conformities, those two things, this holding in Harrison is saying, you can't do that by special permit. That's not what we're doing, though, right? We're simply seeking to extend pre-existing non-conformities. And I think that fits squarely within the bylaw, and that's why we can do it. Next slide. So I think I, you can, I summarized it without needing to go. So the most compelling thing, again, I don't think that you need to, you know, believe me versus your town attorney. I think the most compelling evidence here is that this board themselves has always used Section 5B to allow and authorize extensions, changes, or alterations like the one we're doing by special permit and not variance. So we went, we found these pretty quickly. We went all the way back to '93. These were, I'm sure there are many, many, many more. We found these most compelling, too, because they concern inns, kind of the same use. But the non-conformities differed in various respects. They all, though, the ones, the examples I'm giving, they all involve either altering that specific non-conformity and increasing it or extending it, doing exactly what Town Council says that you can't do. These were all allowed by special permit. So in 1993, you had a special permit granted for the Wayside Inn to add in addition that extended, extended the pre-existing height of the existing building's height non-conformity. In 1994, again, with the Wayside Inn. These are all, by the way, Section 5B special permits. This is the language, again, that I'm specifically saying authorizes our use by special permit. Here, they expanded the rooms, exact same thing we did, from 19 to 32 rooms in a district that wouldn't have allowed that increase in density. So they were intensifying the exact non-conformity, and they did it by special permit. In 1999, here again, they enclosed an outdoor seating area within the required five-foot setback that was done by special permit at the Wayside Inn. In 2007, the Queen Anne Inn was permitted to expand their existing, pre-existing non-conforming structure and hotel/restaurant use to another non-conforming use within setbacks and exceeding height limitations, and it was allowed by special permit. Next slide. Here are four more. '07, Chatham Bars Inn, allowed to alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use by enlarging a structure five feet from the property line with where 15 is required setback. In 2010, they were allowed to, the Queen Anne Inn was allowed to construct a carport within the setback. 2012, now remember, the Harrison decision in 2012. So even after Harrison, this was still applied as a special, Section 5B special permit. Chatham Bars Inn was allowed to expand the pre-existing structure by constructing the pergola and deck and boardwalk within the setback to the Coastal Conservancy District. 2012, again, the Wayside Inn. And I did check, both of those were dated after the decision. Granted to expand the pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure and use via enclosing a deck 3.1 feet from the sideline where five feet is required. Next slide. And these last three, in 2017, are our own property locus here. We were allowed to construct a two-story addition off the back. It added a kitchen/restaurant seating. It expanded and reconfigured manager quarters and office space, thereby expanding the pre-existing non-conforming in-use. And it was done via special permit, Section 5B. And it specifically referenced that there was insufficient land, upland, to accommodate the 18 rooms and managers' quarters for this use. And the last two, in 2018 and 2020, Chatham Bars Inn expanded, wanted to expand the commercial use across the entire property, which, including over the less restrictive zone, to allow for professional office space. And I should say, a five-bedroom apartment was also added there. That was done via special permit, Section 5B. And finally, the Wayside Inn, again, was granted to expand its pre-existing non-conforming building coverage for hotel in-use, where existing lot coverage was 28.7 feet, and they wanted 29.9. 25% is the maximum allowed in their zoning district. So that was an intensification of the pre-existing non-conformity. All of these were allowed by the Section 5 special permit. So we feel strongly and certainly the owners who have recently acquired the property feel that they expected that, given the long tradition in Chatham, that Section 5B would be available to them for this expansion, that not only does the case law and the express language of the bylaw itself, but this history that we've outlined here confirms that Chatham has always allowed this to occur by special permit pursuant to Section 5B. And particularly, we're not creating new non-conformities. We're not proposing any reconstruction. We are seeking only to bump out existing space on an existing third floor with dormers to accommodate six rooms. Again, the footprints will only be expanding 134 square feet. And I can get into all of the special permit criteria if we get that far, but I think I'll pause right there so the board can consider our appeal and ask if you'd like me to hold off on going through the special permit criteria or if you'd like to discuss the appeal first.
We're just discussing whether or not you should go through the special permit and just lay it all out.
Okay.
Or not.
I'm happy to do either. I, we did, as part of the application, if we prevail, file the special permit application as well.
It's not going to hurt to have you do it. We might have some comments.
Sure, sure.
So please, go ahead.
And I think it does also...
And plus, you gave us the findings.
Right. And it helps to, yeah, review again. And I think that slide number seven, on page seven, is helpful, because I think it gives, it's that chart. Hit that one. You know, really defines, and you'll find that chart in my narrative, too, if you can't see it up on the board, that how minimal the changes overall are going to be and that we're just looking for the two extensions of the non-conformities. So going through your special permit criteria, first, you have to ascertain if the site is adequately sized to support the proposal. Again, this property is well over the minimum 5,000 square feet required. There's over 41,000 square feet in total, 37,000 of which is upland. So the building coverage increase here is only 0.32%. We're not changing any of the lot coverage or lot surface with this proposal. Increasing it by 0.32% is still well under, you know, brings us to some 40% coverage, where 90 is required or in allowed. So I think we can demonstrate that the site is adequately sized. I should also reiterate that parking here remains more than adequate to accommodate the room count. We'll still have in excess of spaces per room, 27 spaces to 24 rooms. These building changes, we feel, are compatible to the overall character of the neighborhood. I think you can see how minimal the dormers look. They're below the roof line. They're obviously, very aesthetically, the New England character. Nothing that puts them in opposition to the character of all the surrounding homes, including the residences that are further down the way. They're, these architectural forms and breaking up the massing is all very, very familiar to us here on Cape Cod. And again, the dormers themselves are no taller than the existing structure. The only height above the existing ridge line is going to be limited to that tiny copula that is housing the equipment. And it is empty space 24 inches above that existing ridge line. We feel that the extent of the increase of the non-conformity, this is the important one that I think makes clear to everyone reading the bylaw that this should be allowed by special permit, asks you to look at the nature and extent of the increase. Here, again, that chart on page seven, I think, demonstrates Here again, that chart on page seven, I think demonstrates, this is really a modest increase. It's six rooms that do not require the building to change substantially. It's going to sit entirely within existing floor space with, with the bumped out dormers. All, all rooms will be below that existing ridge line and, and only the elevator shaft is, is extending above. This is a 0.32% building coverage change, no lot, lot coverage change. Everything is, the only two nonconformities are that small building height and the increase due to the lack of upland of the room count. We believe that the site is also suitable. Again, we're as far back from that wetland, well outside of the coastal bank where this building is situated, and even the small 134-square-foot addition will not have any negative impacts to that coastal bank. All existing drainage will remain the same, is more than adequate to accommodate these small changes. Roof runoff will be contained. Again, we feel that this project will have no impact on the suitability of the site for its already existing use. For special permit findings, number five and 11, where they ask us to look at the visual impact to the neighborhood, I just go back to the fact that, you know, the dormers already exist, they're, one of them's being taken away and that, that, that level is being reconfigured to a new shed-type dormer along the, the extent of that section of the building. The, the dormers are going to sit, the roof line of the dormers sit below the ridge line of the entire building. All the windows match the existing architecture. The HBDC has approved this project. The building, we noted in our narrative, is already partially screened and because we're not doing any site work, those trees are going to remain and continue to screen the building, including the, the dormers we're proposing. And the elevator that is proposed is in the rear of the building, kind of tucked in between the two Ls of the building. And so not only can you only see the 24 inches from the front, if you're standing back far enough, but even from the, the sides, because of where it's tucked in, you're not going to really be able to see it from any of the surrounding properties. So we feel numbers five and 11 are also met. Again, for the criteria that asks us to analyze or asks you to analyze whether the existing inuse is compatible with the neighboring use, I would say, hearken back to the fact that this, this inn was here first. All of the uses were developed after the inn was here. So all the folks who have bought properties and built their homes have come later. The inuse has been here since at least 1870, if not all the way back to 1830 when the structure was first built. It is at the end of the GB1 district, butts this residential district. But again, that all predates zoning, our, our use predates zoning, and this came much later. And we notice, we also note in our narrative that there are several mixed-use businesses, including at 400 Main and further, as you're going towards the center of Main Street, Chatham, that are clearly compatible within inuse. We also note, and I think Jeff and Kayla, who are the current operators of the inn, wrote a letter today, which you should have, or earlier this week, that you should have in your packet, to talk about how these six rooms are really important to the town, where over the past few years in particular, inrooms, hotel rooms have gone by the wayside and been replaced with residential construction. There isn't a lot of hotel rooms that are available, and so this is sort of much needed in town, there's a demand for it. And of course, it does bring in the additional revenue to the town through those additional rooms. So we feel it's not only compatible, it does further the interests of the town. The last few, I think I can go through quickly. All the, for number seven and 10, existing water, sewer, drainage, utilities, all will remain the same. They are all sufficient and can accommodate. I noticed that the Board of Health did note, we have to come to them for the sewer connection approval, which of course, we will do and request that you condition any approval here on getting that approval. Otherwise, all site conditions and drainage and the like will, and the utilities on-site can remain the same. And finally, no discernible traffic impacts, noise, or litter. This is a relatively modest expansion of six rooms to the 18 that already exist. We still have sufficient parking to accommodate these rooms and the people, the guests who will be staying there on-site. So we don't anticipate any negative impacts for those last three criteria as well. And the 12th one I left off because it's not applicable. So based on all of that, we do feel that the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood finding is not warranted here. We feel that it won't be substantially more detrimental and that this board could grant a special permit under Section 5B without derogating from the intent of the bylaw. And in fact, given what we're proposing here, will further a lot of the interests within the bylaw. So we respectfully request that you approve our appeal, overturn the determination, and grant us a special permit. Thank you.
If you have the energy, could you do the, the variance now? And then we'll have everything on the table.
Okay. I don't like the variance because I don't think we need it, but I will do it. So the variance criteria is exactly the same as the state. So we, again, in our narrative, has outlined why we feel that literal enforcement of, of the bylaw, again, the 24-inch height limitation and the upland requirement for the incount would cause us substantial hardship here. I think I indicated we just had a new buyer of this property with a very hefty sales price that was reliant on this board's past practice of granting special permits to inns like ours who want to extend or expand the existing nonconformity. And, and they expected, although understood, that they needed a special permit, certainly didn't understand that a variance would be needed. We feel that, again, the height, if not allowed, it is only for the elevator shaft and thus would cause a hardship because handicapped folk and elderly who are juggling their suitcases, kids with children, wouldn't be able to get up to the new rooms. We feel that the need for this variance is caused by the topography of the site. And again, it's the upland provision that is causing the need for the variance, if you determine a variance is needed. 3,000 square feet of upland is needed per room increase. And where this property abuts the coastal conservancy district, and it's the floodplain in the back, that limits the amount of square footage that we have available here. We feel that it is the topography that's causing the need for the variance. It is unique to the neighborhood. I included a color photograph of, not photograph, color copy of the GIS map to show that in the GB1 zoning district, where, where we abut a wetland and, and thus the coastal conservancy district in a manner that doesn't affect the other properties in, in the district to the extent that it does ours. And again, is the trigger for the variance because we don't have sufficient upland. And finally, the no substantial detriment provision of the variance criteria, I think is the same arguments I just made for the special permit, particularly in light of the fact that the inn has been here for over 150 years. It was here first, so to speak. The bylaw and, and, and most recently, this in, inuse provision is, is even more recent. So this is a truly preexisting nonconforming property. And yet, this expansion that we're proposing is very, very modest and we feel can be done without substantial detriment to the neighborhood for all the reasons I just explained for the special permit. And so I think with that, I'll stop.
Yep, no, thank you so much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this, these applications? Any of the three, 20, 129, 130, and 131? Please let us know if you want to speak in favor. Seeing none, I will read the correspondences for 129.
Yes, so we have three different sets of correspondence because it's three different applications. Some crossover, so we'll start with the appeal, then go on to the variance, then finally the special permit.
We'll try to keep taking everything in order the best we can.
Okay.
Okay, so 24-129, which is the appeal of the building commissioner, that there's two letters, December 15th, 2024. This is written by the present owner. And he tells us that as owners of the Chatham Inn, they'd like to present some background of the inn and the project for which we are requesting a special permit. Chatham Inn is the oldest inn on Cape Cod. Recognizing the significance of this and having loved Cape Cod and Chatham our entire lives, we purchased the inn 10 years ago. While we knew that the property needed significant work at the time, we wanted to save it for future generations. Since 2015, we have invested millions of dollars into improving the property and adding a world-class restaurant. Our efforts have been well received with the inn and restaurant by association, Chatham itself, enjoying significant national and international notoriety. In the past few years, Chatham Inn has received countless accolades, including the only relays in chateau hotel on Cape Cod and one of only 47 in the United States, the first Forbes five-star property in Chatham, only one of 11 boutique five-star hotels in the United States, top 50 restaurants in the United States, condo top 500 hotels in the world, and number three luxury hotel in the United States. We have sponsored and are supported every Chatham Town event over the past 10 years. We have also brought in new events, including the fundraiser for Michael J. Fox Foundation, which featured participation by most of the cast of Back to the Future, as well as two of DeLoreen's, two of the DeLoreens from the film. We also founded such events as Christmas with the Grinch and Christmas with Buddy the Elf, and participated in Taste of Chatham, Oktoberfest, Chatham Christmas by the Sea, and First Night. We won the annual Pumpkins in the Park contest three times and supported Shocks in the Park. Chatham Inn was also the presenting sponsor of the Chatham Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament. Under our management since 2015, the inn has generated more than $5 million in additional state and local taxes. Additionally, we have increased from two full-time year-round employees to 25 full-time year-round employees. Our restaurants focus on fresh and seasonal and sustainable cuisine. Since this is a little bit longer than our rules permit, I'm going to sort of, you know, give you the highlights.
Summarize.
They talk about how good their food is and how tourism has, has, has been better because of this inn. And, let's see. Chatham has been so famous being converted to single-family homes and condos. If there are few remaining small inns and B&Bs follow this unfortunate trend, the only option for visitors would be to, to stay in Chatham would be enormous resort with four-figure nightly room rates. This will forever change tourism as well as the character and charm of Chatham. So they, they want to keep the bed and breakfast as, as an alternative. We have worked hard to continue the two centuries-old tradition of the small inn and it's, let's see. These six rooms that we would like to put in will also help replace some of the scores of rooms in Chatham that have been lost due to numerous small inns and B&Bs that have been forced to close over the past few years. We worked closely with HBDC during the process, they, and they've endorsed the design. The Chatham bylaw clearly states, and then they begone to make the same argument that council has made about why this should be a special permit. And however inexplicably and despite the clear and unequivocal language of the bylaws, apparently Chatham's new town attorney has somewhat misread the bylaws and erroneously stated that a variance is required for the project. They say that this is incorrect and that the clear language of the bylaw basically saves the day for them. Over the past 10 years, they've invested millions of dollars into the inn and have supported the town in every way, and then they request the relief that they are seeking. Now, Jay Talaman Esquire is our town attorney now, and he tells us on, let's see, where we got this? November 20, yeah, November 22nd. He basically tells us what council's already explained, that in his view, for structures other than single and two-family structures, the Rockwood case can be distilled into the following principles. For preexisting nonconforming structures, a change that is not related and does not intensify the nonconformities merely requires a special permit. For preexisting nonconforming structures, a change that intensifies these nonconformities will require a variance. And that's basically what he tells us. Let's see.
For the variance, we have that one again.
Okay. And so now I'm going to read the internal agency's response to 24-130 and one letter against, so 12/4/2025. Our, our health agent tells us that the inn is currently connected to town sewer. Any additional flow as proposed will require approval by the Water and Sewer Commissioner. This includes room flow at 110 GPD per room and restaurant seating inside and out at 35 GPD per seat. The Health Division will require details for seating and any kitchen layout changes for review. Additionally, areas for waste management must be maintained in easy accessible, accessible locations. Then we have a note from the Historic Business District, and as council has said, on July 3rd, they approved this project 5.0. Let's see. Then we have a note in opposition from Keith and Linda Brookhauser, and they live at 4 Homestead Lane East, Chatham, Mass. And they write to tell us they oppose the variance requests submitted by Noble House Hotels concerning increasing number of rooms and building height. As a resident of 4 Homestead Lane, I believe this proposal would be, would significantly alter the character and integrity of our peaceful and historic neighborhood. Chatham has long been valued for its quaint charm, commitment to maintaining the traditional atmosphere that makes our town unique. Approving this variance would set a precedent for future development. They may undermine these cherished qualities. Lawmaking exceptions to be established, to establish zoning regulations would encourage further proposals that conflict with the town's values and long-term planning objectives. Specifically, I am concerned that this proposal will, one, change the architectural, landscape, and aesthetic harmony of the neighborhood; two, introduce a precedent for similar variances leading to potential overdevelopment; three, negatively impact the tranquil residential nature of our community; four, set a precedent, causing other residential neighbors locally and throughout the town to seek variances, increasing their building heights above the allowed 30 feet. I respectfully ask that the zoning board will carefully consider the broader implications of this decision on the neighborhood and as the town, as the town as a whole. Upholding zoning regulations is essential to preserving the charm and appeal of Chatham for current residents and future generations. Thank you for your time in prioritizing the best interest of the community in, in your deliberations. We read this one, yep.
We just need to mention it.
Yep, this is from the owner again, that one I already read. And that's the extent of the variance. And then for 130, we have also from the owner in favor, HBDC, which we've already read, Health, which we've already read. And then we have one from the planning board. The planning board has not received an application for this property to date, and that was on Monday, 12/16/2024. And that would be the end of the correspondences. Now, if there's anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against these applications, please make it known. I just want to point out, I don't see anybody at this point on Microsoft Teams. There is a gentleman in the audience who's making his way to the mic, and he knows that he's going to wait till he gets there to talk.
Hi, I'm Bob Lear, 296 Main Street.
Welcome.
I'm a lawyer that has dealt with some of these things before. I just want to comment on Sarah's wonderful presentation, although we've had our disagreements in the past. I'd like to speak to the variance. First, from some experience, I think you're, you would ignore town council's opinion at your peril because he's, he's your lawyer, not Ms. Toronto Flores. And secondly, in terms of expansion of the preexisting nonconformities, I, from my vantage point of the historical commission, find that that dormer on the street is certainly overly intrusive. The elevator tower is just beyond the pale. It's, that elevator is not required. And I will add, I am chair of the Commission on Disabilities for the town of Chatham. I don't think it's required for that vantage point either, as long as there are adequate accessible rooms on the first floor. So it's, I would say that taking this as a variance would be the appropriate thing to do and denying it also the appropriate thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or these applications or has a specific question?
That's correct.
Seeing none. Okay, so we're going to go to questions. Oh, did you want a chance to rebut anything, counsel?
No, I don't think so. I'll wait for your questions.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, questions from the board. We're going to start with Paul.
Let me just see if I can get some.
Oh, microphone.
Let me just see if I can get some, actually, some things clear. Is there an elevator in the building now?
No.
And can you do this project in terms of expansion without an elevator?
I'm looking to Bill, because he was involved in the planning stage.
You could just state your name, even though we're very.
Yeah, Bill Riley, on behalf of Noble House. Although Bob might be right, if you have a certain percentage of accessible rooms, you know, you don't need to provide an elevator. In our instance, we really don't have any accessible rooms. Every room in the place has to be reached by going up steps. The reason why they don't have accessible rooms is that the ADA, the American Disabilities Act, didn't come in until the nineteen eighties. All the existing rooms had been created before that time. So because we want to spend substantial amount of money modifying the structure, the ADA now requires us to make rooms accessible. And so there are several ways to do that. One way would be to build ramps that are consistent with the ADA requirements, which, if you think the tower is ugly, you know, the ramps, the slope is one inch for every foot. So the ramp to service the rear of this building would be about seventy-five feet long. It would have to wind back and forth to get people up to just the first floor. So the purpose of the elevator is to make every single room accessible. And I can tell you, somebody who has worked with adaptive athletes in skiing, accessibility in a manner like this is absolutely crucial to people with disabilities enjoying all the amenities that the town has to offer. And so theoretically, they could do ramps, but that would be more intrusive of covering the ground and significantly less attractive.
Can you install an elevator that just doesn't go to these top-floor rooms so that you don't have to have it as high?
Theoretically, if that was a condition, we would certainly accept it.
Well, it would eliminate, would it not, your non-conformities, your expansion of non-conformities?
Presumably yes, because the, it's only twenty-four inches above, and that is dead space. That dead space would have to come down, and if you're taking a whole floor out, I'm speculating here, but I assume that that could be true, yes.
So it would eliminate the elevator portion of the issues?
Yes.
It would not eliminate the square footage, excuse, the number of units available based on your buildable upland?
Correct. We'd still have the non-conformity related to the number of units per upland, three thousand square feet of upland, but the height, again, I think our surveyor and I are of the opinion it's not a non-conformity because it's ornamental, it's purely ornamental. But the town attorney feels that it is, your building height excludes ornamental structures. But the town attorney felt that was a variance.
It's Jay Briggs, I think so.
Sorry. Jay's here. But I was saying town attorney, I'm sorry, Jay.
The other good-looking Jay with the beard, yeah.
If you have a different opinion from your town attorney, that, so the town attorney's opinion, and I don't know if Jay Briggs shares it or not, believes that because it houses the electrical equipment, it is not purely ornamental, and therefore it is a non-conformity that you are extending. If we were to only make it go to the first two floors and not the third floor, I think we could tuck that in under, the twenty-four inches wouldn't extend above the ridgeline.
Right. And by purely ornamental, it doesn't really have to be purely ornamental, does it? I mean, a chimney is not purely ornamental, right?
Thank you.
So you could do the project without the elevator, or by doing the project with an elevator that's lower in height? But you would still have the question of the buildable upland?
Correct.
But you agree that the bylaw, the current bylaw, does not authorize the expansion but for the exception that's provided for later in the bylaw?
I think that the zoning act alone does not allow this. But your bylaw, taken in its entirety, including its title that says enlargement, the provision that follows the reference to the act and then says other structures and uses can be extended, altered, or changed, is another significant part of the bylaw. And then further down, where it requires you to consider increases to the non-conformity. Taken as a whole, in my view, that language is a more permissive bylaw, and therefore the act doesn't control, your own bylaw does, and this can be done by special permit.
If I could just, if I could just add to that, in the Harrison case, the judge cites Titcomb versus the Town of Sandwich. The Titcomb case specifically references the fact that a bylaw can be more permissive, and the language in the Sandwich bylaw, the language in our bylaw, as to special permits, virtually identical.
So have you had an opportunity to explain your position to Town Council?
I haven't. We had an initial call in which I encouraged that. He didn't reach out to me, sort of, he issued his decision within days of me submitting it. I was going to give him time to read it, so I didn't have a chance. And he issued his decision, and I had thirty days to appeal. I would still welcome the opportunity. Again, I know Jay very well, and I think having that conversation would have been helpful.
I mean, this is not Jay's first rodeo either, right?
No, no, certainly not, although, I mean, it is very town-by-town specific, right? You have to look specific, and you have to sort of turn the page of your bylaw, at least the PDF printed version, you know, to see the next page, and it's buried, and I highlighted it, I underlined it, I bolded it. That word increase, I mean, you'd have to find it, I'd love to point it out to him. That, as well as the word enlargement in the title, I think make it very clear. And also, he doesn't have the benefit of all the examples I gave of how you've historically interpreted the bylaw. I think that combination make it very compelling that our bylaw is, in fact, more permissive.
Your examples of what the board has done in the past are instructive there. I take it that you sort of view those in two different categories, one being the category before Harrison and the other the category after Harrison. Is there any indication that Town Council has opined since Harrison favorably with respect to the examples you've provided where Section 5B was used by the board to allow a special permit as a way of approaching the issue?
I personally don't know whether he has done that. I don't know if he, and maybe Sarah.
There's nothing in the files with respect to those.
Oh, no, no, those, yeah, none of the special permit decisions I read indicated that Town Council had weighed in.
We have some information, maybe that would help Paul, too. Start with Sarah, and then we might go straight to Jay.
Okay.
Sarah and Jay.
So.
This is important.
We'll start with application number twelve fifty-six, which is two ninety-six Shore Road. That was filed before the Harrison decision, so it was filed with the town prior to then decided on, on June twenty-eighth of twenty twelve. So that one would have been pre-Harrison.
I checked.
For the CBI Shore Road decision. The next one for the Wayside Inn, because we did go through our files once we received this from you this morning, five twelve Main Street, they had an existing deck that was three-point-one feet from the sideline where five feet was required, and they were adding a roof structure over it. In this case, it was only a special permit because they did not go any further, and it wasn't an increase in building coverage, because in a GB zone, you do lot coverage. Also, on that property, well, we'll go in order. Three fifty-nine Main Street, the subject property. In twenty seventeen, the board did grant a special permit to construct a kitchen addition and manager's quarters above that conforming addition. Variance was not required at that time because the manager's quarters already existed. We have documentation from twenty sixteen and prior to that.
They were just reconfigured.
That showed, they just reconfigured it, so there was no expansion. So it was determined only a special permit was required in that case.
But an addition was built.
A conforming addition.
Okay. It's an addition for housing the use.
Expansion of the footprint of the building.
That's housing the non-conforming use.
It was solely for the kitchen.
It's still.
And we can always seek further clarification from Town Council if the board feels that that's necessary. Chatham Barzav was, there's a provision in our bylaw for uses in split zones, more restrictive, less restrictive, to allow for the use, only allowed in the more restrictive district to be allowed in the less restrictive district by special permit. Five twelve Main Street in twenty twenty, that was for an office and storage area. What isn't shown on here is in nineteen ninety-four, they came for the same provision of the bylaw with the split-zone law that allowed the whole lot to be viewed as GB one rather than a split zone. So that's some clarification of the different ones that were post-Harrison.
It was an extension, intensification of the lot coverage, however. That's written in the decision.
In a GB one, they're allowed ninety percent lot coverage.
It's.
But it doesn't matter. The point is, if you're making a change, using the language of the act, you need a variance. It has to be fully compliant and permitted in the bylaw. It would be something, if you have to come to the zoning board, it's not fully permitted, and so therefore you would need a variance. That's what, that's what Rockwood says, and that's what Town Council says now.
And these examples weren't done by variance, they were done by special permit in each case, because there was a pre-existing non-conformity that was expanded or extended, even extended. Not all examples were intensifications, but, for example, that Wayside Inn, it states right in it that twenty-five percent maximum is allowed. I quoted that from the special permit, and they were increasing that non-conformity from twenty-eight point seven to twenty-nine point nine.
And I think, you know, with all due respect to Sarah, who's very knowledgeable, I mean, this is a situation, I mean, that Sarah as opposed to this Sarah.
Both are.
You know, if you have to come to the zoning board for a commercial building, Section Six says that you need a variance, unless it's fully compliant with the bylaw, which none of these are, because they all had to come here. So, but our bylaw specifically allows us to come here. That's what the point Sarah's made. And so I think that Sarah Clark's interpretation, while it has the nuances of our bylaw.
This is supposed to be questioned, so, you know.
Well, I know, but it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit in the Rockwood decision. Rockwood says if you have to come here, it has to be fully compliant, or it's a variance.
But what's that? What we comply?
So if you, if you apply Rockwood, you basically are, I mean, Rockwood's pretty clear about the requirement for a variance. I guess your position is that Rockwood doesn't control here because the ordinance was different under Harwich than the ordinance that we have here, that we have a more liberal, in effect, ordinance. Is there anything in Harrison that supports the idea that there is no need for a variance if you are dealing with an issue under this town ordinance, aside from the other sort of extra issues provided in Harrison about constructing a whole new building and all the rest of those kinds of things?
I mean, because Harrison was so, sort of expansive, the changes were so expansive, that was the main focus. All of the case law that Jay cites in his opinion, that I cite in my narrative, was also discussed in Harrison. So the whole notion that forty A, Section Six by itself, if what you're proposing doesn't conform with zoning, you can't do it by special permit, you have to get a variance, that's all in there. The whole notion that you can have a more permissive bylaw by local town meeting vote, that's also in there, all of those cases. The issue that they were looking at in Harrison was whether, what, whether Chatham's more permissive bylaw allowed what was being proposed there. So Chatham's bylaw is clearly different than forty A, and it can only be more permissive, it can't be less permissive, that's the other whole thing. So it's a more permissive bylaw. The question in Harrison was whether what they were proposing, so it's a very fact-dependent analysis, fit within what you have allowed to be more permissive, and where there wasn't reconstruction, and it doesn't say that, and where there wasn't, you can also create new non-conformities, your bylaw doesn't say that. Judge Grossman concluded, you can't do what you're proposing by special permit. But it wasn't a blanket saying nothing is ever going to be more permissive than the state act. Harrison does not stand for that proposition. It rather was very fact-dependent, and I agree with it. I think his reasoning, and I know Judge Grossman, he's retired now, but he's a mediator, very knowledgeable. I don't think he was wrong. I think that the word reconstruction, certainly, where you tear something down and rebuild in a different location on the lot, that's not contemplated by the words change, alter, or extend. And similarly, there's no express reference to allowing the creation of new non-conformities. You know, clearly a variance would be required in that instance. But where you're merely extending, altering, or changing pre-existing non-conformities in the way that we're proposing, and we're not reconstructing, and we're not creating new ones, your bylaw, even the words increase is included in your bylaw, clearly contemplates that kind of project by special permit.
Okay. The height of the chimney right now versus the height of the elevator, how much of a difference is there there? I know you've got twenty-four inches with respect to the elevator.
I think it's lower. I was looking at that. Let me pull it out. The chimney looks higher, if I, but I haven't asked our.
It's higher than me.
I can't, I can't really tell, there's no, no ability for me to tell you that, there's no measurement on the plan, I'm sorry.
I'd say it's similar in height.
Okay.
To the proposal.
Similar, similar in height. Well, I can look at it and see that, between the two of us. You make a repeated reference to the fact that there's new Town Council. Is there some indication? Is there some indication that town council has provided an opinion prior to this town council, which would support your efforts?
I just meant in, in, in referencing that, that he may not be aware of your history of how it's traditionally been applied here. I do not know whether he has ever opined, and I don't mean to suggest he has one way or the other before. This is the only opinion I know that he's given on this question.
Okay. And, uh, you, you didn't receive an opinion from our town council, the prior town council?
No, I, I, no, I did not.
Provided anything, okay.
We have that, that we could review?
No.
Not yet?
So previous town council, um, on a different project.
Okay.
Had, um, and this, the, his opinion hadn't been released. It was a project on Kroll Road where it was determined by, um, previous town council that both a variance and a special permit were required for an expansion within a required road setback for a mixed-use structure.
So I think that what, what's abundantly clear to me, and honestly, your going through each of the special permit examples, kind of confirms always that you don't really ever set precedent here, right? Every single fact, every case that comes before you is, is, um, fact-dependent. And so, um, prior town council's opinion on other projects may or may not have any bearing, because, and, and just like Harrison, I feel is so factually different, it can't be used to say, oh, you need a variance here either. You've got to look at the bylaw, and you've got to look at the specific project applied to that bylaw. So, um, I don't know that it's really helpful, um, to, to look at past projects. And except for, I was, uh, and I do think it's compelling, uh, trying to establish and, and demonstrate the pattern of Section 5B special permits that have been given when there are pre-existing nonconformities and folks are in, uh, proposing either to extend them or in some instances even intensify them. And I think that is squarely allowed in your bylaw, by virtue of the language of the bylaw.
Yeah, I think, I understand your position. I guess, I guess what town, town council would say is that we basically screwed up in those prior decisions.
Could be, yeah.
By granting a special permit.
Yeah. And two rights don't make a wrong, or two wrongs don't make a right, I should say. I used to say that as town attorney myself, but, so that's why precedent's never good. And I, I don't, I mean, it, it, it's not intended to show precedence, because I think, as Sarah demonstrated, each, each case is different. But I, I think it's abundantly clear that your bylaw is very different from the bylaw in Harwich that was reviewed in Rockwood. And it contains express language that does allow by special permit increases in the nonconformity.
I have no other questions.
If I could just amplify one thing for Paul, Paul's a retired lawyer. Do lawyers ever really retire? If you, if you take a look at the Titcomb case, in that case, Superior Court judge ruled that Rockwood required a variance. And the appeals court, they, they took the case to the appeals court. The appeals court, uh, said that the judge was wrong in his analysis, and that the more permissive bylaw allowed a by special permit.
Thank you.
Okay, David Nixon, questions and comments?
Uh, thank you, yeah. Well, one comment, um, you know, our current town council also was our town council in 2012, 2013, 2014. So, uh, he's not the new guy on the block, but anyway. I want to kind of go back to the first question, which is, are we, uh, supporting the building, as I call him, Comissar, because that's what he is, his decision or not? So I'd like.
Wasn't his decision.
I'd like to ask Comrade Briggs, um, what, uh, what conclusions did you come to to rule that a variance was necessary in this scenario?
So, ever since I've been here, I've been reading a document from, uh, previous community development director and building commissioner Kevin McDonald, who used to allow everything by special permit in Chatham on commercial or non-one and two family dwellings. And in his letter on a conclusion after, uh, Rockwood, he said, and if I quote him, "In the future, our referrals will have to require variances for any nonconformities which either remain, be newly created, or even be minimized, but not wholly eliminated." So, from 2012 on, we've been looking at these as needing variances. And, uh, Sarah, Sarah and myself had a phone conversation about this to go over the project early on. And, uh, Attorney Flores stated that she thought that the elevator peak was purely ornamental and would not need a variance. It, it appears from looking at the elevation, it's more than two feet, but that's neither hand or there. If it's two feet over what's existing or four feet over as it looks, um, I don't see it as ornamental in nature. It's a, it's required, it's required by the elevator company. So I look at ornamental, meaning you could remove it and it, and everything would be fine. But if that's required for the elevator, I see that as an intensification of the nonconformity, and that requires a variance. Also, the addition of the rooms where they need a minimum 3,000 square foot feet of buildable upland per unit. They already don't have enough what's existing now. I see that also requiring a variance, so that's where I came down on this, and that's what's being appealed today.
And you've heard nothing to change your mind?
I have not, and I have the benefit of, uh, being backed up by someone with a lot more experience than me than, than I have, is that's Jay Tallerman.
Thank you.
Any more questions, no?
No, no, that's it on that.
All right, Lee?
Uh, yeah, I have a question, I guess maybe just a clarification. The difference between extending a pre-existing nonconformity and intensifying it? What is the difference? Maybe, maybe both of you could, Jay or Sarah?
Um, so in, in, uh, they're often interchangeable, and I don't think that they should be. I think that, uh, extending is where you're, you have a building that exists in the setback, and the addition is constructed along the same intrusion, but doesn't further encroach. An intensification would be an in further encroachment. Where your bylaw covers and uses express language, extension, as well as an increase in the nonconformity, I think either way we're covered. But each, and, and also, I should also say, to make everything further complicated, every town has its own definitions of what, there might be a definition in some town, and I don't think you have it, but some towns actually define a difference between extension and intensification, and it's usually what I just explained. But you should be very specific to the bylaw when you're interpreting that.
Yeah, I, I also thought it was very interesting that in our, um, set of criteria, number three, has us take a look at that.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Steve?
Well, I had a couple of questions, and Jay, um, just sort of clarified them for me, because I was going to ask, um, the structure's already, um, about two feet over, and the, the, the mechanicals for the elevator are going to make it another two feet, so it's four feet in total.
Yeah.
Already. So I just wanted, or, or close to four feet?
Will be.
Will be.
As proposed, yeah.
Exactly. Um, what is the, do you know what the dimensions of that elevator shaft is?
Jim is on the phone too.
Perhaps Jim Owens can help us with that? Jimmy, you there?
Hello?
Yeah.
The, uh, footprint is, um, uh, nine foot eight by seven foot seven, are the outside dimensions.
Thank you.
So it's approximately, uh, 10 by eight, let's call it just round numbers.
Yes.
So there would be a structure above the existing ridge that's two feet above it, and 10 by eight.
10 by eight.
It's a very large coupla.
Okay.
Uh, and especially if it's, if it's a required structure, I don't think it's ornamental.
Okay.
So, I, I have a little bit of a problem with that. The other thing is, is the, you're already over the, the buildable upland and increasing it substantially, uh, for six more rooms. I, I, you know, I, I, I don't know if that's a special permit. I think you, I think that's an intensification of, of the use of that structure, so.
And where the Section 5 allows you to consider that increase, I think that would vector into the substantially more detrimental finding, but not to say it's precluded by special permit.
All right, thank you.
And Virginia Fenwick, questions and comments?
Oh, and comments?
Yep.
Okay, um. Could you, um, elaborate again on the ownership change? You, you mentioned it in your narrative. We, I see that there's a March 2024 ownership change. But then the letter refers to the owner having been there and made renovations and improvements and run the inn for 10 years.
The, uh, Noble House owns 95%, and Jeff Ipoliti owns 5%, so he's still an owner.
He's the one who's been operating it for the last 10 years in that letter.
Okay, so then 90% of the inn has new ownership, which is what's driving this interest in more rooms? Is that fair?
Well, I, I think, yeah, business plan moving forward, certainly.
Yeah, the proposal, just for, the proposal to increase the number of rooms was something that Jeff had started with me, uh, before he, he made the deal with Noble House.
Okay. Quick question for the architect. It, it looks like the dormers, and I know this was your second, um, rendering for the HBDC, but are these, are these wall dormers, or do they just look that way in the rendering? And do you know what I mean?
They are, yeah, the front wall is actually, um, there's a couple of elevation on A3 that kind of shows a side view, and it shows that that front wall is canted back. I think it's approximately 10 degrees or so to, to have that, you know, minimize the impact.
Okay, so you, so they really, uh, they have, they are longer, wider, I guess you could say, at the top portion, and they are flush at the bottom, which is really what I, I consider a kind of a wall dormer. I just wanted to see if that's what you, is that what you're attempting here, and what you would call it, a wall dormer?
Well, I mean, a wall dormer, or, um, maybe like a shed dormer, where the front wall is vertical and more of an extension of the front face of the building, whereas this kind of pivots back, uh, again, to kind of minimize that, that face, along with the, the existing eve line that, that remains.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying. Actually, it, it's kind of two dormers, you're right. It's a shed dormer going all the way across, you know, through the gable, and then it's also the actual windows, I should have clarified, the windows are kind of wall dormer set, is that right?
Correct, yeah, that, that's right, yeah, that piece is, is vertical, yeah, at the window.
Okay, so the windows would be shown that way, the six windows?
If I could just amplify that for just a minute. The wall, the dormers as you see them now, uh, were modified to meet the request of the HBDC. That was, that was a request they made, which we thought was an improvement, so we accepted it and incorporated it.
No, I, I watched those hearings, so I, and I agree, I think this is, is much improved. But, um, I, I think, um, I mean, where I'm going with this is streetscape is so important. It's important to the neighborhood, it's important to Chatham, and it's important ostensibly to the owners. It's why in their narrative, they're so successful, Chatham's so charming. A wall dormer is, I think, a little more, um, it has more character, so that's why I wanted to make sure I was reading the, the depiction properly. That's, but the pitch of the shed is improved from the second application to HBDC. Okay, um. And then Sarah, if you could just, this is kind of a small item, but to Steve's point about, and every one, and actually, the, the, one of the main criteria that you don't meet, the buildable upland. In your narrative, you say 72,000, I calculate 82,000, it's because you have 54, and the, the advertisement says 54,000. So which is it, just because, I mean, it's, it's still.
Needed versus what exists?
Well, you, you need 18 more, 18,000 more for the six rooms, right?
According to the site plan of upland, we have 37,000.
Right, but somewhere in here, you have.
So plus 18.
You, you need 64,000 more square feet.
16.
64.
No, 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 3,000 times six rooms?
She's talking about the total shortage.
The total, right.
Yeah, because currently we're short.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but we're, we're only increasing the deficit by 18,000 square feet.
Okay, I, I just wanted to reconcile, but it seemed like in here, Sarah's number was basing on 54, and our, what we had prepared, what?
Uh, so Ginny, the rental rooms require 3,000 square feet of buildable upland.
Yep.
Per room. The manager's quarters requires an additional 10,000 square feet of upland.
Okay, that's the 10, that's.
That's the difference.
Because it says 54 in here, and your ad says 64.
For the existing nonconformity, it requires 64.
I, I mean, it's, it was just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what, why that was different. That's all I have, thank you.
So I just have a, one thing that I, I wanted to point out. I, we, we generally listen to other boards, you know, and, um, I did listen to both HBDC, and I was just slightly troubled by the fact that they were informed that there was no height increase. And please correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Our surveyor also shows in the upper right-hand corner, no increase. And I think that's because of the time, we all understood to be ornamental. It wasn't until after, um, the, I did the zoning determination that we learned that the, the 24 inches of elevator shaft would not be considered ornamental.
And I'm not convinced that if they knew it was going to be two feet higher, that they would have been that excited about it. I'm just not. So I'm a little concerned about that, that's why I'm calling.
I think, I think the context of the meeting was, the ridge height was not changing on the building.
Yeah, but they were still told there were no height.
That's my memory of the conversation we had. We were always talking about the ridge height.
Right, but still.
It wasn't shown on the plan?
I just remember they were specifically told there was no height increase. So I, I think it might be a little disingenuous to say that. Help me out.
No, I mean.
It wasn't, it wasn't disingenuous, I was there. It wasn't disingenuous at all. The elevator shaft is clearly visible.
Yep.
Okay, and it's clearly above the ridge. What we said to them was, the ridge height of the building is not going up.
You did, yes.
That's what we said.
You did, you did. But I just got the general feeling that they thought there was no height increase. So maybe I'm wrong, like I said, I, I.
I think you are.
Okay, yeah, no, it's happened before.
I, I was just, I mean, I.
To all of us.
It's a, it's a zoning distinction, building height, and he did, I, I had the exact same conversation with the.
Okay.
Site plan, uh, why, why does it say no increase in height if it's 24? But it's because, and they pointed me to the exception, so I think it's whether you're calling it building height for zoning purposes, or whether you're saying there's an increase of the ridge height. So I, I think there was a miscommunication, if anything.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no worries.
Not intentional, certainly.
No, no, I didn't think that, I just thought maybe something's changed between.
No.
You know, I don't know. Okay, so, um, and then I just want to reiterate that if you didn't put this, um, increase in for the, um, the elevator shaft, you could do other things that would be inside that would make it compliant, right?
With.
They couldn't do that without losing rooms.
But there would be something you could do to make it compliant for the inside, without, we wouldn't see it on the outside, right?
I know, but you'd, why would you lose eight rooms to add six? You know, I mean, I think Paul's suggestion of shortening the elevator shaft so that all the rooms on the first and second floor are, become accessible.
That was the best idea, you think?
It was the best idea.
Okay, okay, so when, so if, if there's a possibility that you took that out of the picture, then let's just say for the sake of argument, we were deciding on a variance or special permit, we would just be talking about the six additional rooms, wouldn't we?
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't know, so it's just, I'm just floating that up there as, as something.
We would need the relief for that, correct?
Right. Right, and we would only be talking about that? Can they add six rooms?
Yes.
And we wouldn't be talking about height?
Correct.
If that was agreed upon?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, to express that. All right, so at this point, Paul, I, no, Jay, please, yes.
I just wanted to say something because you brought up the elevator again, and Mr. Riley was talking about the switchback out front to get in the building. I don't know what the access to the elevator is going to be from outside. You might need that switchback anyway to get in the first floor.
Do you want to add anything else, Jay Briggs?
Only if asked.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to ask the building commissioner? Oh, you do, Steve, sorry.
Yeah, I have one more question. Is there a particular reason why the planning board wasn't engaged in this?
Oh, because we had the zoning issue to clarify. And so, to go through the appeal of the determination of the billing inspector, to go through the planning board, we don't have, you know, resolution of that issue. All it's going to do is take staff time and planning board time for something that might never get to them. So, we felt it was really important to get the
Threshold.
Threshold question answered first.
So, is there an intention then to, to go before the planning board eventually? Because you may have a parking issue.
Well, if I could address it for just a minute. I represented the inn through a previous planning board meeting, and we talked about parking at that time. And the, and so what has happened, the town built a nice parking lot right next door. And what the inn has done, so they have sufficient parking spaces for the rooms. So there's, there's more than one parking space for room, per room. What the planning board has done routinely for downtown businesses is waive the parking requirement because there is no parking. What the inn has done is they've, there's a contractor, works for the town, runs the parking lot next to the inn. So we have contracted with him, so we have parking spaces for dining guests and staff using the town parking lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, perhaps we should close all three hearings, one by one. Paul?
All right, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberation with respect to each-
24-129.
24, 120? And I'll make the, what is, 120, is that right?
129, 130, and 131.
Yeah, we can do all three.
I would just, I'm, just, it, it was floated that if I, if town council, if I'd had an opportunity to consult with him or if he'd seen the information that I'd presented today and the answers were no, if, if it is the board's wish to have that further consultation with the town attorney, if you close it, then that can't be part of, his response can't be part of the deliberations. So I don't know if it's premature to close it or not.
Would you do, would you like us to do straw votes on all this, since we've spent this time? Or we could, you could ask us for a continuance, I guess it would be? For you to talk to town council? Whatever you prefer, either one.
Well, I think, I think it'd be appropriate to have a continuance so the town council can weigh in on Sarah's arguments.
And I'd love to talk to him.
Yeah.
So we're not playing telephone. You know, the game telephone. I would talk to him on the telephone, sorry.
No, that, that, that sounds, you know, I, I think we need a definition of the word "other" in our bylaw personally.
That, that too. Extension would be helpful.
Yeah.
Enlargement.
So what's your pleasure then?
Early in Ja, I mean, I, it's really how quickly I can get a hold of Jay.
Well, they're going to get, get a hold of Jay.
The holidays after. When is your, when are your meetings in January?
So our January meetings are rather full at the moment. Our first February meeting's rather full.
And I might add, we're also getting a 40B, we believe, in the month of February?
Wow, yes.
They're even making noise about January on that, so.
So, February 27th?
Oh, gosh. I mean, I do think it would be beneficial. I think we talked about having me talk to him before we got to this point and where there is, Jay read something from Mr. McDonald's previous. I'd love to talk with Jay about that, so.
Do you have a copy of that?
I don't. I'd love a copy of that.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful, thank you. Yeah, if that's what it has to be, that's what it has to be.
So Paul?
So do I hear a motion to continue to February 27, 2025?
Yes.
You make one.
Gosh.
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to February 27, 2025.
For 24-129, 130, and 131?
Thank you. And next time it should be much quicker.
No, that's fine. No, okay. Jenny?
Okay, Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
As Steve DeBoer approves.
I approve.
We need a second.
I'm sorry, I second what Mr. Semple said, and I approve.
And Steve?
I still approve.
I, I approve.
I approve.
As do I, it's unanimous on that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, and have a nice holiday.
We wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
And a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy Hanukkah.
Thanks everyone.
Happy Hanukkah.
Okay.
Randy, did you see Saturday night live last night? They had Adam Sandler singing a Hanukkah song. Very funny.
I could go on, yeah. All right, so at this point, I think we have another agenda item. Annual election of officers. Let me hand that over to Mr. Nixon, I think.
Thank you. Yes, the committee met, and that would be the nomination committee. That would be Mr. Vich and I. And just for the new members to know, to be an officer, you need to be a regular member. And voting is not super majority. The two things that I can mention offhand that are simple majority would be anything to do with 40Bs and also election of officers. So with that, I'm pleased to recommend the following slate. Clerk, we would have Virginia Fenwick. Vice Chair, we'd have Paul Semple. And Chair, Randy Potash. And if anybody wanted to second that, that'd be nice.
I'll move to second that.
We, we, we would need a vote, yes?
Okay, let's have a vote on that then, now it's Virginia Fenwick.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
As Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee Harvey approves.
Paul Semple approves. David S. Nixon approves.
As do I. I guess that's, that's unanimous as well. Now I guess we need a motion to, there's no public comments, right? I see that here on the agenda. No, there are none. I saw it, so I'm reading.
I'll move to adjourn.
And I second that and approve.
As Steve DeBoer approves.
Lee Harvey approves.
Paul approves.
David S. Nixon approves.
As do I. And what time is it? Oh, look at.
3:59 PM.
And good night, Chatham.